All right, let's begin the May 2nd Board of Trustees Meeting. Let's rise for the Legions and David Frankel, please lead us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, one nation, under God, in the little liberty and justice of our hearts.
All right, let's start with the public hearings. Let's have a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Correct.
Make a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. First public hearing is going to adjourn. It's Local Law D on parking restrictions on Ridge Drive West. So we're waiting, actually, we just got in the traffic study slash report for parking on Middle Neck Road. I'm sure the board really hasn't had enough time to read it digestively, as we're going to talk about it later. But in light of the discussion on that, I think we're going to adjourn this to the next month, June. Ronnie, do you have to have a vote on that?
Unless the...
I don't think anyone is here.
I'm sorry. You need a motion to adjourn, are we adjourning?
That's my intention.
Are we keeping it open or are we going to close it in the adjournment?
Let's keep it open, please.
Okay, so the motion would be a motion to adjourn the hearing of Local Law G, Local Law D, excuse me, Local Law E, 2022 parking restrictions to the June 6th public hearing. Motion by the mayor, second?
I'll second.
Ms. Ludowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have a question because there was a, you know, the resident wrote a letter saying against the adjournment. Can we commit to deciding at the next meeting? Is that not, is that outside of our boundaries or is there a chance that we go into next month and say we need to wait until July? I just want to be able to, you know, I think we should respond somehow to the residents.
I don't, but let's see what happens with the conversation about the parking plan from Middle Neck Road from there. I mean, it's my belief that if we do this parking plan, then we will not need to restrict parking on Ridge Drive West and cars will naturally flow to a safer, more efficient place to park.
Okay, so we were in the middle of a, all in favor, were there any, anybody opposed or standing? Okay, next public hearing, thank you.
Next local law, proposal of Law E, which we had a discussion last month on food licenses. We need to change some verbiage to make it clear about the certification for vermin, lint, and pest certifications. I don't think we need to make any further changes to this. I don't know if anyone on the board has any questions.
For the record, I will just read the new amended verbiage, which has opened on the trustee's desk for several weeks now, complying with the aging requirement of the local law parameters amended. Quote, "For getting a subsection, all food establishments must certify their vermin, rodent, and pest tree by certification of a licensed pest management professional upon the annual review of their license."
Okay, is there anybody in the public here that has a question? No? We're ready to vote on this, Ronnie?
I think so, it's pretty mysterious.
What about the SECPRA?
We have to offer a SECPRA resolution determining that this is a type 2 action requirement for the... It's actually all right here and the resolution's implicit.
Okay.
So, um, want me to read it?
No.
Okay. Although we are on public record, we're being recorded by our stenographer, who's not here.
Okay.
So I think it might be better to put it on record.
Okay, then read what you want to read.
Okay, so where the Board of Trustees has determined it is the best interest of the village to amend food licensing requirements, this resolution, and next proposal, Local Law E 2022, is Local Law 4, amending section 147-3C to the code. And whereas the Board of Trustees has determined that it is the lead agency for the purpose of SECPRA, and has started determining that consideration of living local laws is a type 2 action requiring no further action on SECPRA. Therefore, be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby adopt Local Law 4 2022, and that shall take effect immediately. Somebody care, offer that resolution, that resolution.
I'll offer the resolution.
Okay, thank you, and so we have a second. And trustee Frankel, and you know, because we're enacting a law, we're going to pull the role, trustee Frankel, trustee Ludowski?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Harrington?
Aye.
Uh, trustee Janice?
Aye.
Trustee Doran?
Aye.
And there.
Aye.
Okay, so move.
Next public hearing is to vote on amending our Appendix A to our zoning table to include maximum building height. This is something we discussed previously. I don't think we made any changes from last month. Is there any questions on this from the board? No, is there any questions from anyone in the audience here? Or comments? Or comments, questions or comments, thank you, we'd be glad to send the next speaker this. That being said, let's move forward to the vote, but Ronnie, do you have to do the SECPRA announcement again?
Yeah. And so, yeah, this is, this is like less than a mysterious, this is basically correcting the type of, that's why we're not having multiple public hearings on this. And the resolution would be as follows. Whereas the Board of Trustees has determined that it is the best interest of the village to amend the chart located in chapter 240, attachment 1, Appendix A, to include maximum building height. This resolution hereby enacted for Local Law F 2022, and Local Law 5. And the Board of Trustees has determined it is the lead agency for the purposes of SECPRA, and has started determining that consideration of living local laws is a type 2 action requiring no further action. Therefore, be resolved that the Board hereby adopt Local Law 2, and that shall take effect immediately. Any other questions?
I'll offer it.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second.
And that was trustee Janice?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'll pull the role. Trustee Frankel?
Aye.
Trustee Ludowski?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Harrington?
Aye.
Uh, trustee Janice?
Aye.
Mr. Dorfman? And Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
So move.
Um, next public hearing, and I don't think we're going to vote on it tonight, is updating our code to prohibit through truck traffic on Middle Neck Road. For those who are not aware of this, once we took over, the village took over Middle Neck Road a few months ago, that law that was on the books is not a village law, it was a county law. So we needed to add this to our books to hopefully prevent truck traffic through or rather residential streets. And this was good for the health, safety, and welfare of residents who live up on Middle Neck Road, and those who back up on Middle Neck Road, anybody else who uses that lovely gate, the greenway gate, to cross it on the pavement. Are there any questions from all the board or comments?
So right now you can't, it's already allowed, not allowed?
It wasn't allowed through the county.
Right.
But it was a county law, it wasn't a village law. But now that it's a village road, we have to, we need to codify it as a village offense. So if the police are kind enough to ticket somebody for coming through as using the cut through, not if they're doing what we're doing, that's always going to be fine, but it's not meant to be cut through, then at least the police are able to cite the violation.
And people know about it already, so it's not new.
No, the signage is there on Port Boulevard and we've got sign in both of them. So there's signs on both sides of the...
The farm has been there for over 15 years, not that the trucks pay any attention to it. Every time someone meets it with the police, I did stress that this is one of my, because the SeCPRA trail was going down that road and the aerobic just keeps working there. But just to note that this law prohibits any trucks in excess of 8,000 pounds. So, you know, a service van would be okay, you know, or pickup would be okay, it's just, you know, with the truck, there are going to be trucks.
Well, then, as a truck, we do vote for it. So listen, if it's the main flower estate, if it's the main flower moving truck that's way over 1,000 pounds, but if it's moving somebody who's on Middle Neck Road, then they should be able to use it. Any questions or comments from anyone here in the audience? No? That being said, I guess we have to vote to adjourn this to the next meeting, is that proper?
Well, I know that we want to talk about possible cases because this law has been in effect for so many years and we're just kind of wanting something that already exists. But you know, that's it.
Well, does anyone in the board object for us doing this quicker than later? I know traditionally we like to hold things out a little longer, but I think in the interest of public safety, this might be something that we pass tonight.
Since the mayor has neglected our police chief and his associates, who've been getting a lot of police attention, so if they happen to give him quite a little stick, it would be nice to have it in our court.
I'll get to that later on in the next report.
But they haven't heard yet.
Yes. All right, so we'll stick a vote on it, but do you have to do the SECPRA?
Yeah, I'll do it, thank you. Whereas the Board of Trustees has determined, we have to amend chapter 227 vehicles and traffic by any restrictions on through trucking traffic on Middle Neck Road. This resolution, the next proposal, Local Law G, and Local Law 6, 2022, the Board of Trustees has determined it is the lead agency for the purpose of SECPRA, and has started determining the consideration for living local laws is a type 2 action requiring no further action. Therefore, be resolved, the Board hereby adopt Local Law 6, and this will take effect immediately. Now, you want to offer that resolution, please?
I guess I will make that one.
Second? Trustee Dorfman? Trustee Frankel?
Aye.
Trustee Ludowski?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Harrington?
Aye.
Trustee Janice?
Aye.
Trustee Dorfman?
Aye.
And then Rose.
Our last public hearing is, we're adjourning it to next month unless there's someone here from the applicants, but I believe the applicant's attorney is ill, so he can't be here for this anymore.
That is correct, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, I had the opportunity to speak to his law partners to confirm that the matter would be adjourned and that they were in agreement with that, so with that.
Could we be other concerned? From them to be here next month or to decide if they want to put the application on the board?
I believe an email did go out and I'll follow up with counsel. He indicated that I could not speak to him today, so I'll be following up with him over the next couple of days.
Okay, because I'd like to get this one off the agenda, it's been on for six months now.
Just a good question on that, procedurally, if we were to ever hear back from them, let's say, is there a point at which this automatically is determined or it becomes a withdrawn application? Or would this, since there's nothing in the law, it just forces us to eventually take action against it?
I think that the board at some point could do what was proposed, which is to say we're not going to sign for whatever date, and if there's an opening, the board will either go to the city or go to the board to propose it within the circumstances. In other words, the board will determine that this has been abandoned unless you appear, in which case we may not be considered.
Thank you. All right, so I'll make the motion to adjourn this to the June meeting.
June 6th, okay, and do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
I'm sorry, is it you?
It's Debbie Mayor.
Okay, trustee Harrington? Okay, and we'll just take a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or standing, objections? So move.
All right, I'll make a motion to exit the public hearing portion of our meeting. Somebody want to second it?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Excellent, so we move. All right, let's go to the regular meeting and let's start with public comment. I know the carries wanted to address the board.
Ooh, good thing I got that. As long as I'm standing.
You can stand there.
I don't stand.
Good to see you.
Thank you, thank you for coming to the house.
Mr. Carey, if you're stood the record, please give your appearance, your name and address.
Uh, Ben Carey.
Nancy Carey.
Nancy Carey. 136 North Woods Road.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Ronnie, the rules of public comment, please.
Okay, okay. Cards are going into the hammering, the public comment, I mean, the public comment portion of the meeting. I just want to note that to public there, in order to comment, the following rules should be observed. When recognized, the stated in the management, each speaker will be allowed in a maximum of three minutes, however the mayor may extend that time with consent of the majority of the board. Speakers show may not yield their remaining time to another speaker, and they should not be repetitive from another speaker's comments. And there's a lot more, but that's pretty much what's purpose.
Thank you.
Will be brief.
Go ahead, thank you.
Anyway, thank you for coming to the house the other day. Last time we were here was 30 years ago, in 1992, to get a building permit, which went fine. Point being, haven't been here since to ask for anything or complain about anything. We're here tonight, there's property behind us where they've been working for about two and a half years since the permit has been issued, it's subsequently probably expired. They're putting in, among other things, a pool in the backyard and a lot of bluestone patio. That obviously took up a lot of grass, absorption. The main problem is, they raised the level of the yard, the yard slopes to my yard. This exasperated flooding, during the recent storm, I forget what it was called.
I hate it.
We got totally flooded, I take a shot of the mayor, there was sort of a stream flowing from their yard into ours. We spent around 15,000 just cleaning out, getting a 40-meter dishwasher, washer, not dishwasher, washer dryer, heating, air conditioning system, and a $40,000 estimate to sort of like redo the tiles and everything. So a lot of damage from this. We have dealt with the town, we've dealt with the building inspector, it's a very frustrating process because we many times left voicemails, messages, have come in person, and multiple messages, and finally things come. This was pointed out to the building inspector two years ago. This property, all of the dirt was taken from the pool, left there, raises the yard, it's sloping down. You don't have to be an engineer to know this is a problem. And actually, when I wrote the building permit tonight, there's actually a separate permit in engineering dorms that are required 85-3-C if the slope of the yard is going to change. I don't think that was done. The problem is, none of this was done, none of this was addressed. A lot's been addressed in the last two weeks since we said we're going to come here, they planted stuff, we conquered two planting seasons, nothing's been done with the landscaping, which obviously exasperated things when you just have dirt. There was a wall put up, it's supposed to be put up with eight-inch footings, you saw it, 25 in some spots, it's just lying there. Question to the board, will you have a permit, are you supposed to follow the plan, or aren't you? The wall is also supposed to be four inches above the grate of the patio in the pool, the grate, rather, and it's not. So obviously things flow down and you put a wall to stop it, and it's not at the height of where things flow from, you just created a water. There's also supposed to be piping and six grates to gather the water to go into a dry well. None of them were there. A week ago, there's a grate, two, not six, in each corner, they're not hooked up to a dry well unless someone tunneled underneath the yard and hooked them up because there's no sign that the grass was disturbed. So again, it's, nothing's done, then we complain 10 times, something kind of gets done very halfway. And we're still in a situation where aside from old dams that's been caused, things are not being done according to the plans. And it's created this problem, the permits that you have say you're supposed to alleviate any sort of drainage or runoff from adjacent properties, that obviously didn't happen. The drawings didn't happen, we changed the slope. Whatever we pulled teeth to get done gets done sort of halfway, and it's been two and a half years, the permits are expired, there's no C O, the neighbors have full use of their pool, their yard, and fun. We still don't have the situation remedied correctly, and we have a lot of bills in the basement that still hasn't been renovated. So we're kind of disturbed at what happened, disturbed at the fact that we brought this up in the very beginning to the building inspector and...
Which we let the local office draw attention.
Yes, which then we brought to the building inspector's attention. So this isn't something that popped out of the blue, and here we are two and a half years later, it's still not fully remedied. And I know everyone got a little bit of water, but when you get your entire neighbor's water and his yard's mostly non-permeable pool or bluestone, that just exasperates everything. So that's kind of the situation, the concern, a lack of response I feel, and where we still are with even today, two and a half years later, things aren't done as they said it would have been. Thank you.
All right, thank you, we're not going to address the issues right now. Sure. We'll talk to Peter, we'll send you a second email to answer any of your questions.
Yeah, it'd be interesting because the insurance, our friend who's with the insurance, we don't have flood insurance, but they're sort of like, if you want to send us some information, maybe there's a claim. And, you know, I like to look forward and not look back, but when insurance companies and people are paying bills, they love to like, if someone else is responsible, mainly they, or they, I don't know, I know you have to have insurance when you're doing a building for the sake of the town or a bond or indemnification, I don't know. But A, I'd like to just get it fixed, and B, if someone would, which we offered the neighbor, it's like, wow, you want to go see my basement and the river that ran from your yard into my basement? And they're like, wow.
No, I'm sorry that you had this, it's terrible, it's, a lot of people got a lot of flooding in this, it's just a terrible situation for everybody, but thank you for coming by, we'll respond additionally to the other information we sent to you on Friday.
Okay, well, fascinating watching democracy in work here.
Excellent, thank you.
Hopefully everyone's on it for another 30 years before wheelchair.
And good luck finishing your beautiful kitchen back there.
We do, we got two weddings to pay for this year too, so congratulations, thank you.
All right, um, next public comment, oh, I see David Frankel.
Well, no, I don't have a public comment on that, is this time for public comment?
I'm going to the next public comment, if you'd like to address the board in this question.
We do have, who's my first?
I'll be quick, and that gentleman just provided an excellent, this is David Frankel, 12th May, very rich, an excellent segue into my issue. On Mulwood, either the address 54 or 56 Mulwood, there is a very dead tree, it's been dead for three to four years.
And you know it's dead because, did the village officers?
No, no, the office wants nothing to do with this. This tree is beyond dead.
David, I think we need the village officers to tell us if it's a dead tree.
Ask Robert because he has seen this tree for two or three years.
I walk by it all the time, it does not look like it's in a living condition.
With the result that the tree needs to be taken down, and if there's a discretion that needs to take place between 54 and 56 Mulwood, let it happen. But I don't believe that's even the case today because there are two surveyor stakes, what I believe to be surveyor stakes, on 54 Mulwood, which would, if they are surveyor stakes, absolutely indicate the tree in question here belongs to 56 Mulwood. This tree, I don't want the village to have to pay the expense when the tree falls, or whatever happens, to even have to remove it off the street. It has been dead so long and so large that I believe if Jeff has a process that he can recommend, and I think he may have to be involved, according to Robert, to let the homeowner know that this should be taken care of, it's a danger, it's your responsibility. If the board agrees, let him do so, and that may put it to rest.
I did speak to Jeff before the meeting, and I think we have something in process.
And I thank you for letting me get that comment in, and thank you for that segue in.
But David, you see it all the time, you recorded it up earlier, you didn't have to wait till today.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll work on it, I can't guarantee that it'll happen quickly.
It's now in the public domain.
But we will, we will start the process to make sense.
Thank you.
So Mr. Frankel, have you notified the owner of the nature of the tree that it may be dangerous?
I have not notified anybody of anything, other than my wife, who basically says she's not getting involved.
That's part of my heart, okay, thank you.
But I have mentioned it to Robert at the village.
We will vote, take it, next, David. Next, my pickleball friends.
John Maria, 86th Avenue, Madison, Long Island. Just wanted to re-review some additional information about the pickleball court, this to review last time. I had a tree, my pickleball buddies with me.
I'm going to cut you off. Or at least $50,000 to him, of course.
I had a...
No, 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 I talked to our village engineer, it's going to be at least six inches of cement. It's not going to be two, the land needs to be graded, it needs to, I know the special paint has to be put on, a net, it has to be fencing, I'm being conservative and saying it's $50,000. I'm definitely very interested in this, I think lots of people, so I'm glad you brought your pickle friends.
By the way, Alan was successful in...
Pickle Palace, sorry.
Pickle Palace, it gets a 30. Tennis court, pickleball courts over Grand Hills. We've got two pickleball courts converting one tennis court to two pickleball courts, that costs us about $24,000.
The cement was there.
If you're taking, you already got a flag.
Right now, remember, I've got grass.
We have, and I'm not, and I'm not taking down the, I'm not connecting it to the sports court ball, it's got to be one new slot.
I spoke to the... Our sports courts would have to be a prevailing week.
That was my other question.
Why is it a state week? Public, I mean, there's family going to...
Well, I can, so I called a couple...
Why, did you, did you?
Yeah, that's right.
Listen, I did our homework, it's four of you, that's 12,500 each, come on, can you guys check today?
We got a, we got a six?
So I have, I have a...
Oh, ten pickleball.
Oh, yeah.
Ten thousand apiece, we got it.
Everybody else better watch out, they're just going to start voiding.
We have four of the 20 guys we play with every week, and most of them have been answered.
So I can tell you about this, one is new from last week, I'm not going to do another 15, 20-minute presentation.
I did call two concrete companies, didn't mention power help, just said I want to go in. They said four inches, nobody bar, you need like, you need, that would cost anywhere from 8,000 to 1,000 dollars. The post and the painting is about another 750, so that's $20,000. The regrading, I don't know, all I can tell you is that the concrete slab that's there, if some of the only guy that goes and uses that wall, right, look at it, that wall's been there for five years, it's like, we were playing pickleball that made that wall was being built, and it's not cracked, so I don't know what kind of...
It's a six-inch slab, it's a six-inch slab. Our village engineer recommended a six-inch slab, and I'm going to go with his recommendation. If we were to move forward.
Okay, so now, I know, I know you said you had some discretionary federal funds?
No, I did not say that.
I thought you said...
I didn't say that.
Okay. So if the civil began to this, I don't, I don't know any which those, would you consider lining, we talked about this last time, lining the basketball court with pickleball, like tennis courts are lined for ball games, we could easily line this basketball court with pickleball, and we really wanted to do it nicely, and I don't think it would bother the basketball players, actually, you know, make it a dedicated pickleball court where you have, where you painted it the correct colors. So in the pickleball court, we have something called... So in the pickleball court, we have something called the no volley zone over here, which is usually a different color than the backcourt over here. It's red, for example, it's white and blue. I don't think it would bother the basketball players, you know, looking at the basketball court. There's one line down the middle where you could actually You could have, you could have a net there. Now, what do you do about the net? Most people bring their own net. You buy portable net, they do have them, they have aluminum brush alloy. You can go for outdoors or three of you.
I've researched them. I've seen them. I've done my homework since we
I know, I know. If you're not interested, I want to interest you more. So that's a possibility. So if you find that people love this, you know, then they, then they will reconsider this. I'll guarantee you, and this is going to be an issue, we do want to remind this. So many fights between the basketball players, although most of them are teammates and they're playing defense, and the pickleball people. This is a very popular sport. You're going to have to set times. You've got a big group of families, little kids, the parents, big kids like us.
Right.
Playing.
What we could do is we could do a half court where the where the sports court is.
How about I defer to the parks committee?
There you go.
Which you are a member of. Mary Jo is another member of. You guys come back with a recommendation on what is feasible or not feasible. Because I don't want to get in the whole public discussion right now.
We want to release you.
That would be great.
All right. The timekeepers told me we were over three minutes. So I
Can I come next time and talk about this again?
You can have three minutes again next time. Hopefully the parks committee has been on it and become a thing. But if you've listened, if you're interested in somehow securing financing, finances, if you want to do fundraiser, if you guys want to give me $10,000 each, we can talk about pickleball. And I'll even name it after yourself.
You can give me a plaque there.
I want to see what you play pickleball for. See what kind of maritime you can run.
Yeah.
Oh, that's an idea.
But no, it's definitely a good, I think it's a worthy thing to consider. We have to figure out if it makes financial sense for us if the space works out with existing park and what we have to give up. But thank you for coming back. It's great to see you again. Do we have any other public comments? If not, let's move to, Ron, you can run the rest of the meeting.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Next is approval of the minutes. Just to note that there is a correction in the minutes. Thank you, Mr. Albisky, on the appointments. The years incorrect, I will make another bet. Anybody else have any corrections or comments on the minutes? And if not, can I ask for a review of the approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Yes, thank you. You have a second? Trustee Jordan, all in favor?
I am.
Okay. Next, we have the claims. Anybody have any questions on any of the claims?
I have reviewed them. I've looked over each of them visually. Everything looks perfect and fine. The only thing I will note is Max will abstain on the vote for art of landscaping. Correct, Mr. Frankel?
Correct. So I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
You have a second?
I'll say it. The mayor.
Trustee, have anything? All in favor?
I am.
Okay. Next, our village treasurer, Susan Sanbrady and I, net with representative from New York class, which is a cooperative with asset security. This is, it's for government members only. They are operating really good interest rates and they expect the interest rates to really zoom given treasury raises its rates. They're really, there's no penalty for storing money whenever you want to. You can put as much in or as little in as you'd like. This is something that we each have always approved in our annual resolution, allowing this as one of our investment vehicles. So we asked for a resolution so we could make a deposit into that fund. And we'll press the resolution in your packet and I'm not going to read it. I'm assuming, like you've seen it already, a logo of the information sheet that I sent you. Are there any questions?
Ronnie, have we ever put money in this fund before?
We have not in this village.
And any reason why or?
Honestly, I don't know. They have, they very, quite a few villages in Nassau County invest from, you know, large villages like Lynra.
Max's Eagle Park.
Yeah, Max's Eagle Park, small villages like Red Coral Park and and so on. So it's just, if you have surplus money, as we do in our account, we can take a portion of that money that we're not using, you know, at the time and put it into this and then we'll worry about it.
Do you take public comment at this point on things like this?
We certainly can.
I've got a team of like 20 people and $38 billion that invests in fixed income and cash management. I'm not trying to sell you anything. But I'd be glad to look at it and give you my two cents because I spent 30 years doing that. And just to make sure of things like expense ratio risk and all those other things. And I think my friend Mary Jo is very familiar with doing fixed income purposes.
Because there's nothing on here.
Who?
There's nothing on here about what they invest in or any of the questions that Kevin's brought up.
I mean, I have the whole packet, I just didn't think that, you know, that you want to
I agree with her, Ronnie.
I think
If you're interested, I will certainly send it to you.
All right. So Mary Jo and Kevin, you guys are the
I think it's a bit
They're fine trading here.
Two cents.
Yep. You guys want to go?
Investment committee.
Investment committee, thank you. Oh, yeah. Mary Jo. All right.
Okay, so we're not taking any action. This is Tom, I'm assuming?
No, we're going to wait for feedback from the investment committee.
Well, not exactly. I will look at that. I'm not an expert, but Kevin
I know, trust me.
No, but to be truly, that's what we do.
All right, perfect.
I could take you to an expensive lunch. Should we give it up? This will be a business, right? I'm sorry, I'm waiting.
Okay, so moving on. Our building superintendent is not here. I'm sorry, our hiring superintendent is on vacation this week. Our public works, there's no public works, of course, there is none. Our village engineer
You skipped, you forgot the village superintendent.
I'm saying Peter, just the best for last. This is very brief.
Steve's up here?
Steve was, he had a webinar that he had to attend. He just let me know that as far as surveys on middle net growth, they've got a range in prices from $8,000 to $45,000 in the garden exam that are more closely making sure that we're comparing the right, you know, apples back, was what he said. And the road contract plans and specs are eight percent complete. And he's looking to have an out for bid by the end of the month. Right now, further with this part of the base bid, looking to have 100% confirmation that National Grid will be done with their work by July 1st. And now we will go to the village superintendent's report.
And how about the first, because I was away with the meeting and Gary quite a lot of conversations. We knew for months. Okay, so this, I'm recapping. This is, again, I was away, Gary was chairman of the day. I think we had a minimum form that there was a Nine projects were before them. 10 grand trees, second quarter addition, interior alterations, interior alterations. Approved with conditions. We do have a number of conditions on that, so it can be subject them to means then. If not, we'll go forward as further. 60 feet middle net growth, this was a return. Also, addition, portico, rear covered patio. That BS, there's a number of sort of major changes on that BS going to come back for the next meeting. 81 Country Club Drive additions and alterations. This was a return, actually reduced the scope of work from their first submission. And there were some conditions to be met, which I don't think we'll be able to work out. So that's approved with conditions for you tonight. 21 Country Club Drive, just a quick synopsis of this. This is, was a subdivision. In order to finally complete subdivision, they had to remove a garage and straddle the line and build another garage on the house in order to be able to now go forward with that separate lot. So that's what this application was about. There were some things that still needed to be worked out. And we asked them to return for next month on that. 80 Park Woods, exterior alterations and portico. We had some minor changes, which actually are already done. And we have that approved with those conditions being met for your approval. 300ers Lane, a two-story addition for it to go with, part of that addition with attached garage. We have some major concerns about the massing of the project. They've come back with some alterations, but we asked them to come back for next month on that one. 21 Sunset Drive, exterior alterations, running the portico side entry. That was approved with some minor comments for your approval tonight. 34 Woodland Road, maintain a rear covered patio with sort of an L shape in the back. They have a patio below, you know, who weren't 100% happy with all the details there because of location and not due to the neighbors. We're approving that to maintain that structure. And 1045 Moon Boulevard, this is the second sign on that building. The first one was massed in green. I think generally what came in the sign, but we want to see the big picture on the building. We have two more tenants. We have a second floor medical office and there's a nail salon placed in the rear. So we want to, I think we want to see where all that, the locations of the future signs. We can get more of the big picture from the landlord. We asked the landlord they weren't ready with those signs. So we tried to get these locations for them so we can understand better the layout. And that's the report for me. Happy to see that our friends on Oak and Boulevard are finally moving forward. Yeah, well, we, we all had some, or some out. Medical office is on the way, they're going away. And then the, we're about to nail some ones.
Regarding 21 Country Club Drive, the subdivision, so because the subdivision can, that, that can only go, that has to go in front of the board, I guess.
Well, that's been approved already.
The subdivision has been
Years, years ago.
Oh, I forgot.
Years ago, yeah.
So it was credited that the garage was going to be relocated.
Right, because the garage straddles the line of the subdivision, just two lots.
How long does it, do they have to do, like, I know they did approve, it was approved a number of years ago. How long do they have before they have to start work, before they have to reapply?
I don't know that there's a time limit on that decision. I think they've actually filed the lots, the lots are signed with the county already. But for here, for the village, in order for it to move forward, they have to do that, that work. So it was, it was processed through the county. So, you know, they're here now, they're trying to get that going. Does the board have any other questions on this? How about any residents? I thought so. Revenables?
Would you like?
You can stand there.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just for the record, name and address?
I need to ask you, Revenables, who's my husband's line for now, wait. 300ers Lane, they're active currently. I really have a couple of questions about why our original, and I'm not sure if this is the right place, the right time for it, but why our first plan that was submitted last month was denied? And if why, and whether or not the mass is really an issue or there's an underlying problem that we need to like further discuss? Because, I mean, I have the picture here. I don't see us going past the code or breaking any codes. I think we're within our limits. I think we need to expand. We have like a few kids and we're expecting a few more. And so it's not like an issue of aesthetic. It's an issue of whether or not this house is going for people to house us and be comfortable. My husband was here last time, so I missed a lot of the points that the boy had made as to why it was denied. So if somebody can kind of go over that with me. And then I went ahead and touched base with my architect and I had him redraw plans based on a couple of issues that were brought to my attention. And I have those with me today as well. And I think before, when they see both plans, they'll look at the first plan is such a prettier plan than the secondary. So I don't know if you want to approach the podium, if you want to take a look at what I have today or if you
So this board is not going to look at that?
Okay.
That's what we have the A R C for.
Okay.
They have their recommendations.
Do you, but do you guys have
I'm going to, if the decision, if you're not happy with the decision,
Right.
you could appeal it to the board trustees.
Okay.
And we're going to have to have a whole work session on it. But I don't think we're prepared now to look at the
Just make one comment as well?
Sure.
So a lot of the design of this structure was driven by budget, as with most things. And some of the recommendations that the A R C had made, the architect, we've mentioned that these are very costly changes. And the comment that I got back was, well, that's architecture. And in my opinion, I feel like that's, that's pretty ignorant. My wife and I both work very hard. You know, that's architecture is, is not valid, in my opinion. We're not building a pink medieval castle. We are basically just expanding on what's existing, matching brick, roof, everything to the T. It's just making it bigger to accommodate our own family. That's the comment that I wanted to make, that, you know, that's architecture is
It was really disrespectful, I think, you know, because we worked really hard to be where we are. Because somebody could just throw a comment that way.
He said someone on the A R C made that comment?
Yeah. So that's the reason why we're here today, just to see what the next step is. Because again, I don't think it's fair that we have to spend more money than we have or willing to spend to appease somebody who maybe doesn't like a certain something about the project. So again, I don't know what the next step is. I don't know, again, if this is the right time or the right place, but that, this is our situation.
These are the right people, but I don't think it's the right time. Here, do we want to?
I've had, you know, I've had a number of conversations with your architect about it. And generally the first, I mean, I don't want to get all the specifics, but generally the first submission, we had problems with the massing, that the addition was very large, sort of took away from the house itself. He did come back with another one, which I have some comments, you know, comments on that. I think he's in the right direction. You know, yes, sometimes it's easier just to build a big square something, you know. Yes, it's less expensive to do that, but we're looking at, compared to the existing house that you have now, you have a nice center hall there and you have a wing that's separate, a nice scale to it. You know, what was added was very, very large. That was, I think, the main comments in the board that was massive, took away from the house, really.
Right.
And again, we have, we have three architects on that board. I weighed in also separately before the meeting, I put my comments in. So there's a lot of experience there, I'll tell you. And we do it all, you know, all for what we feel is making the project better. Peter, with that being said, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but being that we're within the zoning regulations and within the square footage that we're allowed to build, perhaps it should be brought forward to reduce that if the massing of an extension is going to be an issue. Well, we're not going to tell you to do less than zoning allows. We're not telling you, you can't build a number of square foot that's allowed by zoning. It's just how it's, you know, how it's done with, with, you know, the roof lines and so forth in the house. So we, you know, even the architectural review committee cannot say you can build less, you have to build less than the zoning code allows you. We're not, we weren't saying that.
But just to just to get to that, that's the thing. First, did you like the architect that down with you maybe a couple of years before? And then you kind of knew everything with them and we kind of were under the impression that you were okay.
Right, and I told, I gave some basic I know you're
I'm just trying to understand
So in the interest, like, so there's a lot of stuff to work through here. So I'm going to suggest that, okay, sorry. So I was just going to suggest, obviously you have some questions that Peter can answer, right? And instead of having back and forth here, since there's not been a decision by ARC yet, what I would suggest is talk to Peter. You're back on the ARC agenda for next month, right? Try and get a decision from ARC that you and architectural review can, can agree to. If you don't, then they can appeal it to the board trustees, correct?
Well, so we would like to kind of appeal that today without having to like waste time. without having to like waste time, only because again, it's starting in a couple of months and we don't have time to like go into the winter month and have these fireworks take place in the arch.
Right, but let me just explain.
Yeah.
So the way the code, the village code works is that the Architectural Review, when they first reviews, it makes a recommendation, which as I understand it, has not yet been made to the board trustees.
Okay.
So the Architectural Review Committee, and I'm not trying to minimize anything you're saying or agree or disagree, but they have to make that recommendation first.
So that hasn't been made as of yet?
And from what I understand, it has not. That's why it's being returned to calendar next month. And then if you're not happy with that recommendation, this board makes the final determination.
Okay.
So then what would happen is you're made to come back before this board with that recommendation. And at that point, if you're uncomfortable with the recommendation, you would then present whatever you wish to the board trustees that would make the final determinations. The board doesn't yet have a recommendation to work with. This board.
I have that because it wasn't submitted, because we were here, I think, a week or two weeks ago, right? So...
That's this board, to Architectural Review.
Okay. So you're saying that the next step is wait in like additional thirty days for the recommendation to come in?
Yes, in the Architectural Review Committee.
Okay, so...
And I'm happy to talk to you more about the process of deciding this new...
And no disrespect to you or the Architectural Review Board, but it's a little frustrating because like I'll, like my architect, I'll talk to my architect, my architect will talk to Peter. Peter will talk, it'll go back and forth and it's been kind of going back and forth and Peter will know for a few months from now. So now we're like in May, no recommendation had been submitted yet. Now we have to wait another thirty days for something that was done two weeks ago. It's hard to wrap my head around, like, we are living in a condition. Because again, we also got flooded. Our basement was, anyway, that's a different story. We're still trying to work through that. And so I don't know what's taking so long of due respect. It's been like two weeks, another thirty days. In my mind, it's like we might as well just move. You know, and I don't know if there's something we can do to just make things go a little quicker or not, or...
I don't think, this board, so what Jeff is explaining is this board cannot do that, make that decision tonight.
Okay.
So you can ask us to, but we cannot.
Okay.
So you're gonna have to go back to Architectural Review.
So if I was to say, so let me just give one, one other thing that I promise all, because I'm sure a lot of people want to speak here. If I would like to appeal whatever decision was made?
That should be answered. They haven't made a decision yet.
Okay.
You can't, sorry, go ahead.
Great, so what will happen is when the Architectural Review Committee makes a recommendation, that's a recommendation, it's not a final determination. It then comes to the board trustees. This board has to approve it or disapprove.
Okay.
So if, at the end of your discussion with the Architectural Review Committee, if you disagree with what they're recommending, you would then speak to this board.
Because usually what happens is the applicant and the committee work a lot of things out that it doesn't ever have to really get escalated to this board to have to intervene.
Right.
Most things work out. I did a housing project years ago. It was back and forth. Max did a project a couple of years ago, it was back and forth. So these things, usually there's changes that are against board concessions that are made on both sides. So I think the process works. It might be a little bumpy for you right now, and I apologize for that.
Oh, no, you don't need to apologize. It's just again, the last meeting, I didn't get anything out of it. It's not like we were, you know, but not the last. Thank you for your time. I'll take in everything you said and Allah.
I know Peter's been in conversation with your architect. Let them work as much as they can together.
Okay.
I think hopefully we'll have a good resolution so that we can approve this next, I can't guarantee we'll approve next month. But we don't, we only meet once a month and A R C?
Yeah.
They're volunteers, they're not paid. They only meet once a month as well. So that's, that's just the process that the village has.
Okay.
I'll just add up. If we did get some revised plans, which I'll distribute to the committee and if we get some feedback before then, you know, to expedite, we'll do that.
Okay. Is that something that you would want to do, that reach out to you or have the architect kind of reach out to you or like how?
Well, he sent it to me already. He sent, he sent me something already.
Right.
Right. So I'll distribute it to the other members for review and then we get some comment, maybe feedback when that's reached.
So is this the first thing, the first plan? Have you sort of moved that in?
I've got revised ones, I assume you've seen them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Need a motion?
I was gonna say, is there any other comments on any other parcels in front of board? If the answer is no, I'd like, oh, let, sorry, go over here.
No, I forgot where we were.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the A R C.
Yeah. And I want to support the findings of the A R C.
Gary will make the motion.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Want to say her?
Hi.
Any suggestions?
I'll stand to three hundred.
Okay, the neighbors, okay.
All right, attorney's report.
I have a separate report tonight, primarily zoning board to mass this.
You have a case line?
Excellent. So, you know, public works, Rich is an tier of engineering here. Guys. Can I? Michael, go back to David.
Ronnie, go back to David. You said the National Grateful Project is wrapped up by July first. Does that mean firm?
We're, no, that's what needs to be verified, Rich is...
Oh, the verified?
Steve is asking to verify that National Grateful will finish in time. If not, we're going to postpone firm until next year.
Got you.
Because I do not want to pave that street just to...
Yeah, no, I completely agree. I just wanted to make sure.
Not to bend the other residents on firm with that, with paving, but can't rip a road out.
They're not gonna want to drag down a hole with a patch in it.
No.
With a firm with a patch in it.
Where the firm would meet the other, where we stopped with firm next year, that doesn't make sense. So I'm hoping we get this done. As long as I'm happy with your kind of... Ronnie, administrator report.
Quite the peanut butter. Okay, update on municipality, which is our building department software. We started working with people in municipality. We had a meeting on May seventeenth with all of our end users, which would be Spencer, myself, Peter and Robert. And we're going to start customizing the software for us. Unfortunately, this is a regular process and they anticipate it takes between eight and ten months for it to load, we're ready to go live. Next, Microsoft three sixty-five, as you all know, the email is still working. And next week, we're going to make the switch over from all our files will be in the cloud and it will be on the server. So that's our next step and we've already done the setup work for that. Our file scanning, file scanning is also finished. It's been very seamless project. It's been great because anytime we need a file, we just email our scanning service and they send it to us within a matter of, you know, thirty minutes or less. And that will, it's been an enormous help to us in terms of people asking for files and files.
How are we doing on the budget for it? We're under, correct?
We're going, we're going to end up under budget.
Excellent.
Right, so it was originally budgeted about a hundred forty-two thousand. It should come in one twenty or less. What was flooring? So we got a court grant for flooring in the main office. We're getting rid of carpet, we're putting in a vinyl plank flooring. That is going to happen on Thursday. Our computer, our R T P will come in, will connect all of our computers on Thursday. The flooring company will come in and move furniture, we've got the old carpeting on Friday. Saturday, they will install the new carpeting, put furniture back. Monday morning, before work, the computer people come back and plug everything back in and we will be up and running. So on Friday, this Friday, we're going to be very, very limited. The computers will be down. I mean, I'll have the phones forwarded to my cell phone. People will not be able to get into the front door because the furniture will be piled up there. Basically, we won't be able to take money, we don't be able to access any documents.
But this will be able, people will be able to access.
Heather and I will be here, you know, to answer questions. But if you have anything that you want to ask, please, those people will be right there.
Are we putting out constant contact? Letting everybody know?
Sure.
I didn't think about it, but sure. Okay.
Okay.
I can have it on the website. Do a Facebook too.
Okay. Then next topic on what you're talking about. Okay, so Robert's there. I know Robert and Ann Trankel have been looking at, so about twelve homes that wanted street trees. They've been looking at a proper availability of the spot. If it's appropriate, if there are any gas or water lines. They have to yet go out and purchase trees in the market. We ordered four hundred and fifty seedlings, saplings, I should say, not seedlings, saplings, from the D E C nursery up in Saratoga. And as soon as they arrive, we'll send a date for our free tree giveaways.
Where it's totally May, I think, right?
This isn't May, yes.
No, it's gonna be in this month.
Yes. It's just very soon.
Excellent.
And I, I'm a reporter.
Yes, get here early, because last time, it was... It's like that. Soon as you lose track, I'll save you a trade. There's a report, couple of things. Number one, we have two worthy properties in this village that need consideration for landmarking. One is the Cemetery of the Country Club Drive. And the second one is Elder Fields Preserve. We have a mechanism to potentially landmark these properties. We just do not have a landmark commission. And it's not a board, but it's actually a commission per our code. So I need up to five resident volunteers. I can identify, I can identify two of them. One is Robert Becker. And I think one is Mitchell Schwartz. I'm talking about a landmark commission, Miss Becker. So we need to have a commission in order to consider the landmark.
Done it before.
I figured, so I need up to five. Is it, Ronnie, up to five or I need five? I forgot.
I don't have the code.
Well, I can pull it up for you.
The Landmark Preservation Commission shall consist of five members, each of whom should be a resident of the village. So that's section one forty-three, yeah.
Yes, so I need to have five, it's not up to five. So I need three more. So any residents or anybody who will work and knows of any residents who might be interested in landmarking, please reach out to us because at a minimum, we really need to landmark the cemetery. I know Mitchell was working with the Cub Scout on a cleanup plan. So once we had it cleaned up for the second time in the last dozen years, I think it'd be nice if we landmark it. Once we landmark it, we could possibly go out and get funding, grants to help preserve it, put a fence up, do anything else that's necessary to keep the site nice.
Having recently been involved with trying to save historical houses in Central Manor, which doesn't look like it's gonna happen. I do think we need to move on to something like this. Although Elder Fields, isn't that Nassau County? So...
It's in the village, Nassau County only. But I believe that property, if it is deemed worthy of landmarking, I believe we can...
But there's said rules.
Well, that's why we're gonna have a landmark commission. They're not...
Right, okay, good.
So that's why I like a commission.
Right, well, then, what about, I mean, not that they need it, but San Point Historical Society? Well, that's historical.
And county.
Con, I'm sorry, con, I meant con.
Okay, I was like, San Point, you know.
Con.
Mitchell, do you know if that's been landmarked or not?
Yes, that was one of the original three.
Oh, it is one?
Yes.
By, by who?
By us. It's a village flowerhead historical site.
What protection does it have?
The property cannot be altered in any way, exterior wise.
Oh, exterior.
And it's also listed on the National Register of Historic.
Oh, so that's a national one.
The property, the people owning the property...
But being on the National Register doesn't mean much.
They want it from the import.
Is it on state?
It is not a village of the state.
That's the real thing that has reception.
Yeah, that's the top one, that's, yeah. Shibbo stuff.
Who owns the cemetery that the property?
Yeah, we can outright deal with that, which...
What would the original three, that's that?
San Willis. The Georgia, the Den House and Mason Drive. Which I'm sure you remember the two.
All right, the oak tree, right? Or the oak? You took pictures of it, right?
Right. So again, if anybody knows of anybody who would like to participate on the landmark commission, please get me some names, because I'd like to... No, you can't, you're, you're on, that's, it's, the commission is able to award, can't serve on too. So...
Can they be residents?
No, no, they should be residents.
So why don't we ask, do you know anybody that have a burning interest in this?
We, we were, Mitchell has a possible person. But I'm putting it out there, it's the first time speaking.
Send it to the newsletter.
Yeah, I'm just figuring out my way.
And I'll look, I'll look.
Should have done that.
I'll say that. By the way, all right, we're closed, but we need to finish here. Next, next, Gary and I met with some of the residents on Saturday for the Middle Neck Road Committee, where we want to enhance the safety and beauty of the street. We're focusing right now on the safety. It was very dangerous as we were there. There was some guy like Frank who almost ran us over in his car, right Frank?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, fine, I got it.
Frank's luckily stopped nicely with the stop sign, so thank you Frank.
Stop sign.
But yeah, we had a good first meeting. I think we'll have another meeting that will come up with some recommendations. Focusing first of all, the safety, primarily the, at the Greenway Gate. We definitely need some sort of crosswalk, we need markings, we need lighting, we need something to make that area safe.
How many people ran us off on what you were saying?
Well, interesting enough, because we were standing there, everybody stopped. But if we were ten feet back on your seven...
There was a lot of slow rolls.
But there were a lot of stops.
Very few people stopped. A lot of noise sounds.
So, so how, Max crosses that street daily, how many people stopped Max?
You got the baby carriage.
I think I stopped.
Why don't you just put it aside?
They think it's, they think it's a deep lane.
No, we're talking across, you know, like...
You know.
If it's on roads, you don't have to figure out where we're flying.
So...
The road's not wide enough for us.
Where, where you get some... Even on the side where we, like...
Probably twenty-two foot wide road.
But you know, on the side where they cleaned up all the crap on the, you know, there's, that's, we don't...
We're going to look at that as well.
Is that...
If you, if you...
Right away.
Right away, right. Well, guess what? When we have the survey, then we'll know how much of the road that we own.[1588.12] So once Steve's able to.
I think we can put it on the road.
We can, we'll figure something out. Gary has some good ideas.
Brian had a question.
Nope.
Maybe we should ban cars. Oh, I don't have a lot of security.
Close it down?
Call car.
Three months everywhere.
We're losing control.
Uh, next item, traffic safety. So.
Because we have to have certain limits.
Okay, thank you, Ronnie. So.
Yeah, we're rammed.
Yeah, what if we don't? Then what happens? Do we get in trouble?
Bring this back. So traffic safety lines. The first speed pump was put up last month. We needed to get new anchors. The anchors, if Rich was here, I would know when, but I think they'll do some time this week. We're gonna get.
Done.
Good. So if Rich gets back next week, we're gonna put two new speed pumps in. Brian and I will review the traffic plan that we got last year. And we will select two new sets to put in more trial speed pumps. I met Ronnie and I met with the commander of the sixth precinct. We, that's why we subsequently sent out the constant contact email about safety with your vehicles and locking them up and not leaving the keys. Because we really do not want to repeat what happened last week with the Mercedes that was eventually stopped on the, on the L I B with the four officers that were injured. We asked them kindly for additional enforcement of our traffic laws for safety. And from what I've seen with police on Middle Neck Road and what we've seen in flux of ticket writing in the village, it seems to be working where we're getting more patrols and they're writing tickets. Again, the big thing, stop, it's stop signs. I want people to stop at stop signs. I think that's very important. And I think we've had a couple of speeding tickets possibly written as well. From what I heard from Susan today. So that's a good thing. And my message for the residents is slow down. Stop at stop signs, you won't get tickets and you won't hurt our children and our dogs and everyone else that are out on the streets.
On the stolen car piece, I think Commissioner Ryder said it best last week. I know people are very frustrated when cars get stolen and it shouldn't happen. But the whole leaving your keys in the car thing.
So many people.
You're doing it. Officers, you're putting the public at risk. Because that accident would have happened if people just brought the keys in their house. And it doesn't matter how many times we told people, don't, just don't put your keys in the, leave your keys in the car. They don't listen. But I've seen people actually, after repeating that to them, kind of go, oh, wow, okay. Because somebody's safety is at risk. And I think that message is translating.
Do people not understand how the problem works? Yes. Is that, is that the problem?
No, people think.
If it's in their car and the car's locked.
They think that the criminal is not gonna see it, right? And, but your windows now are right, your mirrors are out, so they know that that car has it. So that's the step they don't understand is actually it's a signal to the criminals that your car is ready to be stolen.
Yeah, it's like stealing.
Yeah.
Yes.
So that was the first time I saw people pause and kind of go, oh, wow, I am doing something wrong. Was when they, when I told them the story of the cops getting, you know, injured.
The commander of the sixth precinct said basically ninety-nine.
Well, I know that there were, there were four guys on Ridge Drive East checking doors. Because the one house, forget the number, the one I, we designed, I designed, forty, uh, that driveway with the weird driveway, that's where the Ring camera, that was on TV, even on channel five or channel seven or something, that, those, that's the house where the Ring camera saw the four guys trying to get into the, the four cars that they had parked down. So they must have been hitting along Ridge Drive East.
And they're right over there. They hit my block two years ago. I have the footage. I gave it to the police. They hit my car, but they got the neighbors' door, so.
And it's not unique to this neighborhood. It's happening every year.
Okay, I love it.
So it's not a Flower Hill thing. It's, you know.
It seems to be, I'm not sure if you're right now. As the commissioner said.
We have the nice cars.
As the commander said, that ninety-nine, they sent them the stolen cars from keys being left behind in the car. The keys aren't being cloned, the cars aren't being towed away. It's keys being left in the car. I have done my traffic safety report.
Thank you for, you for police.
Oh, I will be with them regularly to ask them to help forcefully the safety laws.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees report. Gary.
Yes.
Superior Committee.
Uh, Superior Committee. Well, it's a, it's a committee of one.
Yes. Right, does that help?
No names. Anyway, I had a good, I had a good, um, good, good Zoom call with Cameron last week. And having D and D scheduled this week, so. So hopefully be able to record something in terms of this year. Getting a better feel from both of candidates. After talking to them quite a while. Had a, had a very good call with Cameron, I thought. And then one other thing I'm, I'm also been working on, which I'll share with the board is, I had a, have had some dialogue with Mindy Germain since we met with them when they came to. And I know Brian was involved with getting back to them in terms of the architecture review committee's comments on the structure that was being designed. And she, my most serious conversation with Mindy was, yeah, really great, good comments. We really appreciate it. We're supposed to be coming back with something that will take on board a lot of the comments. And I'm looking forward to collaborating on getting that all done. And I segue from that into talking to her. Well, I know you guys are gonna have to do some restoration work. And while you're doing it, we should be interested in supporting an idea of putting in a rain garden in our park. And so she did pass that right to the superintendent, Dr. Jo, Fort Washington Water. And I just got a call today and he had a very positive response to that, so. We should be hopefully getting, I, I will hopefully be able to report some additional information next month in terms of what they're able to do for us. So I think, and there was also Nassau County has been pushing a lot of this, so I know that we can find support with the county as well.
So, I'm excited, thank you. Mayor Joe, I know a quick little spot about the butterfly garden.
It's pretty easy. Basically, the butterfly garden was a test last year, very small, under the trees, nobody really saw it. Hopefully grow it again this year, but it needs to be expanded. You know, you can't even, it's so small. No, no, I got this. No, I got this. So Rich is gonna, Gary, I think, I'm in the city five days, as I can't even. You're gonna need to stake it out. And basically Stella will recommend the plants, put them in, that's it. So it's gonna be pretty simple.
I agree. As long as someone gives Rich direction on where to dig.
Yeah.
And I took the monarch butterfly pledge for the village. So now we're official butterfly.
Okay, so you, you need to speak to me before, and tag your it on that thing.
Okay.
We can talk after the meeting about that.
One point on that around gardening.
Yeah.
I wanna just say thank you to Stella.
Yes.
To you all, to Rich, because the bulbs came up on the islands and it is a nice wood piece. And I think each year we do a little more and more, it'll get bigger and bigger. But I, it was, it was great. Like I saw the, the day, that fills on Park Avenue. And I came around by my block there and there were tulips coming up and it looked really good, so great job.
Ronnie? Oh, any other trustee reports? I'm sorry. Anybody else has anything else?
No, tomorrow night is the Fort Washington Loosa.
And, oh, interesting.
Is it?
Fort Washington Loosa.
Fire.
And tomorrow's the Rosetta Loosa. I guess it's the Loosa Day. Yeah, I assume you'll be attending?
Yes.
I'll be attending.
I think it's all together. It's a joint.
It's a joint?
Oh, it's the big, big one.
Okay.
I've been to that one, he says he's still, so.
Yeah.
I'll see you there.
I'll see you there.
Next.
Yep.
Okay, home business. We have to pass a resolution authorizing the spending of our art funding. Sorry for format. Figure packet, I'm certainly not going to read it. It's pretty oil and plate stuff. So I'd like to ask someone to approve the resolution.
I'll make the resolution.
Just be thankful, you want to hear a second? Trustee Dorfman, all favor.
Any questions from the board first or no? Perfect.
I can beat this one.
Yes, we can. Let's do the parking study last, Ronnie.
Okay. Um, okay, so next, we have a resolution to include local law I, no parking on Middle Neck Road.
Let's hope, let's do that with the parking study.
Okay. Big, big favors in our here. Okay, Katie Apple Run. Okay, this year's request came in for doing a trip to hold a Katie Apple Run throughout the village. Just as a reminder, Katie Apple is a young girl who lived in our village. She passed away from cancer. Her mother started a foundation to raise funds to find the cure. And they're very responsible. They do a cleanup job. They have police involved in traffic flow. And they've always been a pleasure to work with. So I'm just going to ask for a motion to approve Katie Apple Run on June 6th.
For the record, they've done a great job cleaning up every year. They're actually the best user of the park that we have. They have the proper insurance forms. They've been doing this for so many years. I've never had a single complaint, so. I talked to the Katie Apple people. I think that's great use of our park. Brian, you got it?
I was just gonna ask about insurance, so you have an answer?
I have insurance.
That's my question.
Okay, can somebody offer that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, trustee Denise, or your second?
I'll second it.
First Donald Mayer, Roosevelt H. Hunter?
Hi.
Okay, um, okay, let's do the park permit.
Park permit.
Okay, we got a request for from the Art Thursday Garage of Lynn Hasset. They were here last year and again, no problems whatsoever, except that they ran out of garbage cans and they respec pizza boxes next to the garbage cans. This year, Rich said, if we allow Fred the permit, he will give them more garbage cans.
And let them know that if they come around the back of the village hall, there's the garbage, they leave the garbage stamp. These garbage cans out for Saturday pickup. So, you know, all they need to do is bring your opportunity.
Yeah, yeah. But this would be recognized for a windfall for the village. We'd make up five thousand dollars in fees for the rental of that area. They bring in a porta potty in the parking lot, which they did last year and they left it there for several months. It wasn't being serviced, it was great. So contractors didn't have to come into the garbage management room. They could just support a body outside. Yeah, I mean, I had no complaints from anybody.
Sounds good. I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Keep it going.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, was that seconded?
I seconded it.
Okay. Old Amber?
Hi.
Okay, great.
Ronnie, when is her date?
Okay, they're starting reverse on June 6th.
It's on, made a clear job.
And the show is July twenty-nine thirty and thirty-first.
Yeah, using the park like a dozen days.
Did they not have any issues with the dog people or everything was?
Well, they shouldn't because, you know, they're going, they're doing their, those were in the evening. And dog park hours end at nine thirty, uh, eight AM.
Yeah, right.
And they, the girls are just going to the eleven AM.
I'm just asking because there are no two, I mean, it seems to me there are no dog park hours.
Yeah, I agree.
Whenever somebody, whenever somebody feels like going.
They start again.
But they, they didn't have any issues with it. It sounds like this is like a good organization, good resident person, just asking.
It was a good community use of the park. They were a little messy, but this time we'll give them more garbage cans. They'll be less messy.
You know, but they didn't have any issues with the dog.
They did not. And Rich is even gonna clean the stage up a little better this year. Clean more of the brush backs, they have more stage space.
You're ready to, you know, maybe busy with nanny and they need a dog in the play.
Anything's possible. Let's discuss the proposed local law H.
Okay, artificial turf. So, um, this is proposing a, a local law. We're gonna be artificial turf or grass in the front yard. And this is to hold a public hearing on June 6th.
Do the people that have it, are they the only people in the village that have one? And number two, that are they, their grandfather?
That's my question.
Jeff, I believe they would be grandfather.
Yeah, we, once you.
They would have to be grandfather?
Do you have to be grandfather?
You don't have to.
Well, there was no provision before. You can't, there was no permit required.
I, I've seen other ordinance where they, they give like, let's say, for instance, lighting ordinance where they give you a, you know, time period that you have to comply. Is that not legal?
Legal?
I think so.
Why do you think they do that?
It's kind of one of these things where it's almost assumed you wouldn't put artificial turf in, in a village like this and then let's go.
That's slow.
We're not talking about a country. We are talking about, it's frigging there, you know, it's a lot, so.
And there's no justification, you could grow, that's not steep enough, then not grow.
No, it's ridiculous. So rather than say, no, it's not legal, I, I would prefer and say, let's look into it.
Well, like, um, this could go in front of the architectural committee.
It, it's landscaping, which is under the parking.
Did they come to you and ask if they could put?
No.
Ooh, yes, yes.
There we go.
Have any other residents complained about it or have we heard about it? Like, from any other sources, I'm tracking that.
No.
They actually, they actually screened it out, it was a little wrinkly.
No. Peter, that one. It's still wrinkly. Here, I went over there, I sent the board, it's all wrinkly. Yeah.
They didn't, they didn't glue it down properly.
Yeah.
Maybe we got a bunch of people just walk on the lot and get all.
I, I still think that, I mean, I would be happy to talk to Mr. Russo and explain that it's not really.
Is that the owner?
Is that the owner?
I think that's.
Should be the first.
But reality, Mr. Reality, I'm sorry. And, and just tell him that, you know, aesthetically, it really doesn't work.
Sod will grow fine on that slope. You ever see a gash horse? And I got an issue with it, it's not good for the environment.
I don't, I don't introduce it. Jeff can investigate whether we have to alter it to have it preemptive. And I can give an update and see if this is.
Do I get your, your permission to call them?
Sure.
Okay.
Give them a call. Let them know we're thinking of.
And if I listen to you, you'll know.
All right, well, regardless.
I know where you'll be. It's in the back of my truck.
What does he do for his?
This is with private staff.
This also just points to the, to the permeable surface areas as well. That would be. I mean, because we can, we can outlaw astroturf, but what's, keep someone from, putting someone in front of.
Some people have it in their backyard, some people use it for their backyard. And I've been asked, is that considered a patio? And the way most of them are done, they're done over like a gravel base and they, they do drain. So, so when the question comes to me, can I, can I put, use it as a set of grass? I say that, yes, basically, as long as it's permeable pipe insulation, most of them are. So.
I guess you have to.
Yeah, you didn't. I didn't.
I'm just watching with temporary, they just put it there for the winter.
No, Ronnie, that thing costs so much money that it's not temporary.
Yeah.
What they put out, that, that's very expensive. Ronnie?
No, I was just gonna say, I think, I think we should consider, this just talks about the front of limiting other areas. Because at the end of the day, even though it's permeable, like you get other issues from this. You know, with the island effect and things like that, it's, it really is, you can make it permeable, but it's no different than concrete. You know, and you're not planting stuff in it, so.
So from my perspective, I understand that. I definitely think from a, a perspective, that grass looks, I'll say, okay for now, but maybe in a year or two, that's gonna look terrible as turf. That's terrible. And other, if other homes start doing that, it's a bad trend.
Oh, no, no.
For a player, this is, I mean, you know, there are people who are players or kids, maybe sports.
No, and that's what I'm saying. I'm saying I think in a limited space is good, you know, like around a playground, if you're putting a bouncy surface in or you have a small area. But I think if we're concerned about this in the front yard, we should also be concerned about somebody putting their entire backyard as artificial turf. So I'm not saying limit it completely bad. I'm just saying limit how much of your rear yard can be artificial turf as well.
As opposed to having to go back and revisit this, be comprehensive. You wanna take a stab at that?
Yeah, so let's introduce this and I'll, I'll work on the back.
Because I, I'm, I'm not comfortable with the backyard. Just because there are residents who do sports courts, legal sports courts for their, their kids.
Well, we can do.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
We can do percentage of the backyard.
Right. If there's a percent.
Somebody can make their whole backyard of, of sport.
What would be the same as a permeable surface?
Well, just to understand too, is, is as far as on grain patios, the way it currently broke, this you brought up before, you can go right to your setback. So like on an R five or seven, you can go ten feet from your property and pave it, everything within ten feet of the property line, the whole backyard. Doesn't count as coverage. You would have to take care of drainage, but that's our code now.
As long as you're pushing it out to your neighbors. As long as you're pushing it onto your neighbors.
Let's discuss, let's discuss that, sorry. Let's move forward with it.
More or closer.
Let's move forward with this, preparing this for a public hearing next month, and it's something we don't want to move forward, but we won't move forward.
Okay, can I have a motion to hold a public hearing on local law H?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Paul Baker?
Aye.
Any votes?
Okay, the only thing left is.
All right, so after many months of waiting from our friends at PHG, they were kind enough to send us a middle neck road parking plan. Brian and I had some questions, so to make life easier, they actually went and superposed this onto an image of the street. Because the drawing itself was just way too confusing to figure out where all these parking spots were going to go. I think if you look at this, it, it's, it's easier to absorb, to understand where we want to put the spots, how much we need to move the center yellow line over to the east. And what are the lines we need to remove, and other signage that needs to be, some signs need to be removed, and some signs need to be banned. I'm actually surprised we got, I think I counted, what, seventeen spots? I think seventeen spots.
Yeah.
I, I thought it'd be less, but the math works, seventeen, we mark it out, we'll have the 20 foot or whatever, I forgot the length of a proper spot. I counted seventeen.
Yeah.
It's pretty interesting, we already got feedback from one resident that they would like one of the spots removed. But that's something we can discuss at, at a further times, at, at a further time. I know you guys just got this, I don't know if you had enough time to absorb the questions.
We don't reset in curves.
No, we're setting, we are only resetting lines.
Shoulder will be.
There's no concrete.
Line on the shoulder.
So this sidewalk, is, is that wide? Yes.
Oh, no, I know, you're right, you're right. There is a curve being reset next to the sidewalk.
Yeah, because this, this spot here, this first two, three spots, you know, have to go in because, see the line? The 22 foot line comes into the roadway, so this has to be pushed.
I think what's happening here is.
Is there a curb there or is it just dirt?
No, there's a curb, there's a curb there. There, I do not believe, Ronnie, that there's any concrete work that's required. It's moving the yellow center stripe a little to the east and moving the, I'll call it the white, whatever the term for the white line is, moving that as well. Everything's just shifting on the existing roadway. There's no change, there's no adding asphalt, there's no removing curves, there's no adding curves. It's striping and signs.
Right, it's just what you said.
If you want, I can have them send us back the existing, just the line current, if you want. But something to think about, it's, it's, we would then need to pass or introduce local law I. Now, let's just stop the people who live in there from parking there all day and the people who work in the restaurants, so they'll have to park on Ridge.
We shouldn't have, we shouldn't, we shouldn't, should it be some limit value?
It, it's something we can discuss, but I think if we start, if we limit it other than our existing 2 a.m. to 6 a.m., then, then you're going to take the people. The intention of this is to give the workers of various businesses that are parking on the residential streets a place to park that is safer for them, they don't have to cross Middle Neck Road, they don't have to walk up a steep icy street in the winter time against their vehicles. It'll give them a place that they can park for their entire work shift. And when one work shift leaves, then the people from the restaurant can come and take the spots, the workers from there.
Now, we just got to make sure that the body shop guys don't park cars there all day.
So part of the discussion that Ronnie and I had was that it's a banning, no, please, this is just a tad, but we want to also.
They're not, they're not banning.
I think the, I think the, we're going to ban, uh, part of this is to ban commercial parking. Because I just imagine that our residents at the gas station are going to park their records on the street.
No.
You nev-, you never know what's going to happen, so. We can, we can, we can address that, and I don't want the commercial, I don't want vehicle commercial disruption or anything, so. We'll introduce that for the next month, the local law two, because it's going to take us a couple of months of hearings. Amending the no parking to allow parking in that area. We don't have to restrict it to 2 a.m., 6 a.m. because village roads already are restricted to 2 a.m. to 6 a.m. 2 a.m., 6 a.m., yeah. And we'll add in the no commercial parking. And also what I want to add is.
You're running this time also.
I want to add in, we have to add some no U-turns on that street. I just don't want people thinking that now this is a good turn of the street.
All we're doing is we should move to Flower Hills. Because it's, you can't see it where it is, it's already like a half a block into the Flower Hill. We should move it like somewhere closer to the.
But you got, that's a whole other story, I mean.
That's fine, it's always grown plants.
Okay, we will.
The registration committee.
This, this, but this really pushes the point that not to have a survey on this road is, is, is bad ass words. Like we got this study before we had the survey.
Yeah, how did they even do this?
Right, he didn't, he doesn't, it's just, he's just got what they're working off of, off of that, so.
So he's working on the survey.
And we better get it soon, because I think that would be foolish to push ahead on a survey.
Yeah, because if it's off, right now you're at 11 foot lane, they are minimum for two-way traffic, right? So if you're two inches off on the survey, you're going to have 10 foot, you know, 10 foot, 10 inch, it's going to be, people are going to lose their side view mirrors.
So I, I just want to.
That might slow it down. I just want to point out, we did not, so Gary, we did not have middle neck road before we started this study. And part of the reason, we was, we were going to approach the county about doing this restriping while we were trying to still work through middle neck.
Right.
So.
Maybe we pulled the survey from the town, they may have, they may have the survey. This D and B has surveyed everything, any municipal thing.
So let's, let's find out.
Well, we should see what's on, what's on. And I'm not, you might have pulled the survey from, from the town.
But I still think we can put this on the agenda for next month.
Yeah, yeah, I would just feel comfortable if we had, if we had, like, make sure that we have the survey.
I think if.
From your opinion, the survey?
We getting reimbursed, we got money from the county for the survey.
No, we got no money.
But having at least.
Hold on, timeout, I thought part of the deal was we were getting at least from.
We will get money, we will get reimbursed, we are not got money.
That's what the mayor just said.
And getting a survey right now.
Do we fill that in?
Getting a survey right now is a three or four month. Gary, I can tell you that for sure.
If you love them, you can find a survey, it's doing too much.
I'll make a couple of them. All right, well, listen, we started.
Survey Mitchell?
Don't ask Mitchell, we're going to go on a tangent, do not.
We'll buy you the transfer.
Maybe, no, maybe Mitchell can find the most recent survey.
Right, now, our residents that have been here multiple months, but it's.
They have.
I just emailed it to them on the same day I emailed it to you. And one resident, which I forwarded me the letter, was concerned about one of the spots. So we have to maybe move to one spot, I'm not sure how this affecting their drug.
And then the people on the no parking, what's that, the I am, children's.
You know, they're, they're the same people, they're the same people.
So some of those houses, their driveways are on the middle.
Got you, got you.
Three of the residents' driveways are on the middle road. And 22 feet is more than sufficient backups.
Sorry.
Four houses. So they can't say they can't back down.
We'll, we'll address that when we.
Mayor, are we going to table introducing the local law regarding the yard parking?
No, let's, let's, let's have the first public hearing. Because I think it might take us a couple of months anyway, so maybe when this holds itself out, it'll be ready to go. So we're going to do the no parking for this plant, we're going to have no commercial parking in the same spots, and no U-turns on that street.
Not, is it no commercial vehicles or no commercial parking?
I think it's no commercial parking so that the body shop can't park his, the vehicles he's working on.
That's why I'm saying commercial.
Right.
So I don't want, I don't want commercial, so I don't want commercial vehicles, I don't want someone deciding to dump the tow truck there all day.
I got you, yeah, you got it, no commercial parking.
We don't suspect that visitors, I don't know if there are many visitors to apartments that they would think of.
They might, but it's open parking.
Because what, there's, there's a couple of businesses in the.
Yeah, there are businesses in there.
So listen to this, parking is the only word.
Right, the point, I guess that's a good point, is there are businesses in there, so if a landlord should realize that he needs parking.
But here you got it, there would be people parking there today probably. I mean, it gives them an additional place to park, but there's nobody, there's no.
Listen, this is a good experiment, if it doesn't work. We've only invested a minimal amount on some of the restriping, we could always undo what we've done. But it's something we've been talking about for what, Brian, two years, two and a half years, three years, 10 years? It's, it's definitely something that I think that will help alleviate the parking, the worker parking that's in residential neighborhood. Because if we ban parking on the residential streets, those cars are going to go somewhere else up to other residential streets. We got to give them somewhere safe to park, and I think they would appreciate walking to work instead of crossing Middle Neck Road and trying to get killed for that.
I think, so the U-turn thing will be an issue because people will come off an open border and do U-turns getting into those slots.
Gary, we could overanalyze everything and then we'd be a problem to everything, and then we're going to be back to square one. But we got to try something, that's why I love to put the no U-turn signs, because we say that'll be.
No, I agree, you got to, you got to try it from that.
Right, so you got to have restriction.
It's three moves.
Two foot wide road.
All right.
All right, so we need to get a motion to hold a public hearing next month on the parking.
I'll make that motion. Any seconds?
I'll second it.
Trustee Harrington, Paul Baker?
Aye.
Paul's name?
We have the history report, thank you, village historians.
I read the docs.
Did that.
Our next meeting will be Monday, June 6th, and there's no other public comments, I'd like to make a motion to, and we.
I second.
Paul Baker?
Aye.
No, that's a lot of making of reports.
Go ahead, go ahead, I'm murder scene the other day. Have you? A bunch of little zombies.
I was trying.
No, I always have to turn the meeting off, sometimes Rich does that.